The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order and roll call starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Earn, Counselperson Brent Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda? So move. Motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Questions? Mary Dunn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of April 28th, 2020. We have motion to approve.
I like the motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mary Dunn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We'll take us on to finance and budget, we have the council payable listing with the additional listing there, any questions? Direct them to Finance Director Carla.
Is the mic on? Shouldn't have said they can't hear.
Is your speaker on?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
You guys didn't get that message?
We have a motion to approve council payable.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, we'll take us to motions and general business. First item tonight, under motions and general business. Bucknell, the state's final plat will be a public hearing. Bucknell has submitted the final residential plan development plan for review as per section thirteen forty and the final plat is per section twelve twenty. The plan is being submitted under a P D, P R D, which allows for alternative development styles and methods, provides flexibility and amenities in order to obtain higher quality of development. The proposal which was approved by the planning commission and city council in March shows a townhome setting with separate units and a larger common space. This will allow for each townhome to be modified to fit each homeowner's wishes. The P R D must have fifty percent open space and half of that space is required to be usable recreational space. Since the original development of this area in two thousand three, the rules have changed regarding the stormwater pond. Bucknell has been working with the city and upgrading the pond to meet requirements and to also participate in a new city pond that will be connected to but located on the adjacent property that will help with stormwater from earlier developments to the east. As you remember from the March P and Z meeting, there was a lot of concern regarding the drainage ditch that lies between this development and the residential homes along Bird Boulevard. This drainage ditch had been cleaned out and taken over by the city a few years ago due to the neighborhood infringing on the ditch with grass clippings, fences and plantings. The city required the property owners to remove anything that was in the way of the flow of the water, which means that some fences, some plants were required to be moved while others were allowed to stay. The city also maintains and mows this drainage ditch. Since we took over this ditch, we have not received any complaints regarding the ditch not working as designed. The development agreement between the city and Bucknell has been signed. The review letter from City Engineer Oronote outlines the grading drainage plan thirteen thirty point sixteen and review drainage calculations and the pond in a separate review. The development will be required to follow all city ordinances. I'm now going to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Do we have duly noted in our packet, we have some citizens' concerns. Do we have any other written or oral concerns?
No, just the two that are in your packet.
Do you have anything to add, Coach Brader?
I, I don't. Um, Bill Anderson, the engineer representing Bucknell is, um, on the go to meeting and he can update you on progress.
Bill, are you there?
Bill, unmute, unmute.
You did, what'd you say Jenna, Bill's not here?
He's got to unmute himself.
I do?
No, it's all Bill, there you go.
Can you hear him now?
Yep, now we can hear you Bill.
Alright, good.
Now we can't.
Okay, what's that, you want me to run through what we're up to here?
Yeah, why don't you give us a little rundown quick for the public here so we know what's going on.
Okay, um, do you see light street with the flat under?
I don't.
Okay.
Alright, on the meeting? I don't have it on though.
What was that?
You see your email and not your...
Yeah, we got your email Bill, but we don't have your...
Alright, start it.
There you go, there you go Bill.
Alright. Are these too high tech?
We need to ask him to talk loud because we are in Facebook.
Talk as loud as you can Bill because we're on Facebook. We want the public to hear. That's not fair.
Uh, as you mentioned, uh, the plat includes this portion, which was pointing eight acres. Um, the component replating as well as the normal line. The plat hopefully includes expanding this, uh, which is from the existing pond is, we have to expand it a little bit to make the pond bigger because the pond regulates that being, this was built in nineteen ninety-eight. So now I'm going to show you the second plan so you can see the site plan a little better. Now north to the site.
Alright.
Alright, alright. This, this is pointing eight six acres wide. It's already sold there to plant the this number from eighteen acres. There's already certain stuff in here, here and here. Those surfaces will be extended in to serve the line. There's twelve lines. This is the shape of the base unit. The, uh, the buyers will have options to make the unit a little bit larger, they can each show a three car garage, some of them will have a two car garage. And what we did was if I zoom in a little bit, these, these dashed lines right here represent how big the unit could get and you would still meet your fifty percent green space requirement. So if all the units are the base unit, it would be way over the fifty percent green space. Uh, so people could expand a bit, they move a little wider, have force, do a few things. You can see some of them are different sizes, uh, they tend to expand a little more or less. There's also a mix as far as, uh, this goes. Uh, some of them could be day windows, uh, these two could be day windows, related to these two could be day windows and the rest of them could be flat on grade before having full basis, so the buyers, buyers, they'll change as how they want. Um, there's a landscaping, um... Uh, there's, there's a landscaping requirement, upper yard requirement along this side and this side. We submitted a plan from that today, which I don't believe I have, uh, but I can show you. The concrete, the driveways will be concrete. One of the reasons we did the planned residential development is that we can have shared driveways. So these units will share this driveway, these units will share this driveway. Because the utilities department stepped in, we won't have to disturb Bucknell anymore. The construction will include sidewalk along Oak Street as the units are being built. We will include cleaning out and expanding the existing pond and the pond will be, when it's done, the pond will be meet the requirements for even this area over here to be developed at the first. So we want to do it one time and then get it done and up to the modern, uh, up to modern project. The total drainage area that will go to this east waterway only increases by about two tenths of acre. And there's about ten acres of company that water, so it's a very small increase in the runoff that goes to the, um, to the drainage area. It's just this area and then right along here, the slopes into the waterway, driveway also up to the west. I forget if I've already need to present or if you guys have any questions about this?
Any questions for Bill from the council? Any comments come across Facebook either?
Yeah, we're having a little trouble hearing. Uh, I could hear fine on here, so maybe on the replay, we do have a question from Jennifer Hutchison McLaren, can the map be shared so we all may know what is being referred to please? The map that, that you are referring to. They would have, they're asking if that will be shared so that they can see it.
Is there anywhere we can share it tonight or is that available down here as they requested or?
Yeah, we can add it to, um, the comment section of this flat video.
Okay. Yeah, there's, I don't, I see no reason why we can't.
No.
Add that. Do they want it now either or after we do?
We, we won't be able to do it until we're done recording.
Then, then we can do that.
Oh, do it immediately now?
Or they still open the lot? Cause we could run a hard copy to them.
Any other questions or comments over there? Anything up here at the table anybody wants to add?
No. And we can get their email from them too and I can email it to tomorrow and then answer the questions.
Do we need anything from Jenna on this chair?
Um, only if you have questions.
No questions at table?
No.
P and Z was good with all this?
Sean, the, one of the letters we got is questioning the waterway, can you go over that with us?
Uh, I guess I'm not sure that there's any more issues with the waterway. I know cars were upset because some of the, uh, plants and stuff, trees that weren't disrupting the flow of water down at the bottom there, we allowed them to keep them in the easement as long as they weren't disrupting flow and we've had no issues with it, so I don't see any reason to force somebody to tear bushes out and stuff that's not negatively impacting anything.
So right now there is no issues with the waterway up there as far as, as far as the city knows?
Everything's been going good.
We haven't heard anything since we did this, um...
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
Thirty-four or whatever it was.
One more comment from the public. Uh, Jennifer added to her previous comment, she would like markings of what the speaker was referring to for each point as he was reviewing, uh, the map for the drawings.
Okay, we can do that.
We can do that, Bill, we'll take care of that.
And we should apologize, this is kind of our first time doing this, oh, in the future we have little, it'll get better if we have to continue.
We have been mowing and maintaining that waterway, I am not a hundred percent sure how this will be handled from this point forward because the homeowners on the east side that are established there now have been mowing down too, so we may end up not mowing anymore because the homeowners more than likely will maintain it and take care of it. If they don't, we will still take care of what we need to do to keep it mowing on a regular basis.
I'll monitor it.
Yep.
Alright, if we have any other comments, no more concerns from anyone at the table or not?
Did P and Z have any concerns?
No, nothing came up.
Well, thank you Bill for your time and everyone out here, we're gonna close the public hearing now, we're gonna go back to the public meeting. Oh, sorry about that Bill, didn't I shut it off? Thought I had my, thought I had mine shut off, Bill, sorry about that. Just see if you're awake, it's like...
Was there a question?
No, no questions. No Bill, we, I just, I was closing the public hearing, I'm sorry about that, I didn't have it shut off.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the resolution should be subject to the engineers' review?
Alright, we're looking for approval of resolution twenty twenty dash, a resolution approving the final plat for Bucknell Estates with the engineers' final review. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries.
I, I can't hear you, Ben. That makes a difference.
We just approved it Bill, we're done, so...
Okay, now I can hear you.
There you go, so now you can go on and do whatever you gotta do the rest of the night.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you Bill. Am I supposed to leave mine on to the whole meeting?
No, um, no, you can, just, uh, we don't need Jennifer anything else.
Alright, that'll take us to the next item, it's a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit for a fence on four oh one South Main Street. The city has received an application for conditional use permit, section thirteen seventy-five point twenty-seven sub C, to allow for the placement of a fence in a B one commercial district by Dan and Rena Scruggs. They are proposing a six foot privacy fence, you have a map, it's a site on there. Planning Commission held a public hearing on May fifth, they are recommending approval of the conditional use. Council action is going to be to approve or deny the conditional use permit per section thirteen seventy-five point twenty-seven sub C to place a privacy fence in B one district. Any questions here at the table? Who's, who cares on the planning commission, Joe? Was there any question where that, it, it looks like that fence is really, really, really close to their neighbor's house.
I'm trying to figure out which.
Was there any issue with that?
No, I think the neighbor, cause I, I've talked to Rena too and, uh, I think the neighbor's looking forward to having it up, cause it's more to keep the kids and dogs in. There we are. I, I understand what you're saying, cause it does look close, but...
Were there any objections there in P and Z or any issues?
No.
Any other questions from us?
No.
Alright, we're looking for either a motion to approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Say a motion and a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item, Public Safety Committee. The American Speed Sales. In two thousand nineteen, the Public Safety Committee agreed to move forward with driver feedback signs that show the speed of cars are going. Cedar Representative Joya Stetson was able to find a grant program through State Farm and the city was awarded a grant in the amount of seven thousand dollars. Initially, the plan was to add signs at the entrance of Sturfield on Highway sixty-three North and South on, north and south and on Highway thirty East. At this time, we are seeking approval of two signs based on state bid in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars. The two signs will be placed on Highway sixty-three North and Highway sixty-three South. We will then apply for a second grant in twenty twenty-one to place on Highway thirty East an additional sign on County Road thirty-five by Bear Cave School. So, motion requested to approve the state bid for the two signs of seven thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars to E F A.
We talked about this before, the VIN dot dictated everything, obviously they're okay with putting those signs in.
Yeah, they helped us pick out the placement and then we sent them the specs of the sign and we heard back that that was, it was what they wanted, and they're good with it. We also, um, kind of have a line on maybe a possible grant or some donations and so there could be a chance that we could get the other two yet this year.
Where are they gonna be? I know they'll be on sixty-three, but...
Yep, so coming into town where, um, the speed limit currently is right before the bridge?
They have to be placed right next to speed limit signs, the current signs are just on the north side of the bridge coming southbound, uh, in our land that we mowed by the city shop there and then on top of the hill coming in by Rick Labor's, you get right to the top of the hill, there's one on the, for the northbound coming in there. So they'll be placed right beside existing speed limit signs and we will, they'll be solar, so you won't need power anything to them. Kind of like what we're seeing as. They'll flash when you're over the speed limit until you get to the speed limit, so it warns people that you're, you're speeding at the time.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Now that takes us out of motions and general business for tonight, takes us to Mayor's staff consulting reports. Mayor's report tonight. We send our sympathies out to a lot of our folks in town this week. It'll be city sense of sympathies to the families of Kent Rowley, Dorothy Bean, Nora Sheldon, Arlene Walker, Darrell Priest, Rockney Peterson, Eva Paquin, Barbara, Kevin, Norm Schultz, Quinn Bissonette. And heartfelt and kind of a tough deal here, condolences sent out to our former council member Dick Up the Grap, his wife Marilyn passed away here the other day. Everyone, uh, everyone knew Dick and Marilyn and it was kind of a shock to all of us, so our prayers go out to you and your family Dick. The citywide cleanup is this Saturday, May sixteenth from eight AM to noon and Wednesday, May twentieth from three to seven PM. This year, remember you'll have to unload your own items from your vehicle. As a work team from Rock River Transit, we will be unable to touch your items and I believe we're also asking to stay off sixty-three and line up down the back road there and all of it'll be, it'll be a lineup, that's for sure. But, well used, well deserved, our citizens can use it. Uh, once again, I'd like to thank all of our community for evolving and pulling together through this, we're hoping for, uh, better days to come quickly. I myself think it's right there, almost ready to go. I'm hoping for it, everybody is with the nice weather, it's gonna be hard to contain people. It's kind of a sad deal that we're gonna have to miss out on some graduations, it's a very, very big sad deal to me that I don't get to do the memorial day now at the cemetery, I feel less... It's kind of funny, the men and women that died for this country stood and took a bullet, now we're, we're not allowed to stand and breathe air around us to honor them, which is, to me is a hard pill to swallow. But I hope we all dig out and go out and honor all these people, let's not forget them over a deal like this. Keep yourself safe, this will be over before we know it, so that's all I got to say. So that'll take us to the city administrator's report.
Uh, the report's in your packet, um, really the big things we're monitoring now are the state guidelines. Um, as you saw, the chamber board has had to reduce drastically the summer fest activities, but they're still all trying to pull for some type of neighborhood parade and then, um, some type of drive-in, drive-up if you will, fireworks, so that we can still do a little celebration on the fourth. Um, then obviously we're following the state guidelines or governor's guidelines, specifically the state department of health on the status of the pool. Uh, we're hoping those guidelines come from them, then it treats all cities equally. Um, that being said, we're at least having to make plans for prepping and cleaning the pool, because one of the things with a pool maintenance is you do basically during summer months, should keep it full, keep pumps running, cause it takes less wear and tear than if we were to just leave it dry. And so if we can't have a pool season, you will see some activity going down there of ongoing maintenance, but we're doing all we can to try for a season if possible. Um, and then on a bright note, uh, Stewie Cruisers, been a mainstay here in Stewartville for a long time, uh, since they're under kind of these same guidelines of the, the distancing, they're gonna try out a, um, mobile car show instead of a stationary one, where they'd basically do a caravan ride through the, um, neighborhoods, similar to what the teachers did and what the fire and first responders did a few weeks back, so we'll keep you posted on those and, uh, any developments now that we think will come out this week, um, from the governor's office, because the one, um, order is supposed to be lifted next Monday, so we'll see if that holds true or not. That should do it.
Any questions for, uh, Bill? Alright, thank you Bill. Uh, Finance Director report, Carla?
We are just trying to get everything finished up with the audit, um, so hopefully in, probably not until June, will the auditors be in here doing a presentation for everything, but Bill and I are working on trying to get all of the, the last details, um, we had a little bit of a delay in getting the Fire Relief Association information, um, back, but that is all back now, so we're just moving forward.
Any questions for Carla? Alright, thanks Bill. Uh, Public Works Director Sean?
Uh, just, we're swamped, uh, the spring's here and a ton of stuff going on, uh, but we've been getting a lot of the landscaping stuff done, cleaning up the ponds that we got dug out during the later time and, uh, got the ditch cleaned up up there in Ferguson Alexander where we buried the, the storm sewer in there last year and it cleaned up and it looks really nice. So, it's starting to take shape, but we are behind on some things, cause we had guys off for a stretch there and stuff like that, so we'll get caught up shortly.
How was the amphitheater setup, John?
Mobilization could start. Sorry, go ahead.
How's the work out the amphitheater coming on?
Uh, we, poles get approved to purchase, so they'll get delivered this next week for all the light poles to get hung out there, uh, Red Cliff has been working out there, he's not completely finished yet, but it's moving along, so things are taking shape.
Good. Any questions for Sean? No, tell the guys you're doing a great job for the way they have to do it. Keep her in, you're looking good.
The deck looked good, looks good down at Florence.
Well, the way they gotta do it, they're doing great. Waste water, uh, water reform is in your packet, City Engineer, do I need to go back to Jenna, see if she's got anything?
You can, if she's still mad.
Uh, let me see. Yeah, she said, hey Jenna, you got anything for the City Engineer part?
No, I know.
Sure. So, um... Uh, we will be constructing here pretty quick, we're gonna have a pre-construction meet on Friday for the two five utility extension, um, and they do plan on getting ready next week, so the current sewer will be for the apartment, um, eleven, um, Elford, we have it's ready to go, the developer, but that's it, soon as possible. Um, Elford is to go right in C I P once it's done, five fifty-five. So we're having approval on where the C I P is, and expect construction to start this day.
You're breaking up off of bad eyes Jenna, I don't know what that's from.
Did you get any of it out?
Ask her when the construction's beginning on the C I P.
When does the, why don't you go over when the construction starts on the C I P again?
The C I P will get started after the utility survey for question fifty-five for the apartment, um, and which will be after memorial day.
Okay. Any other questions for Jenna? Everything's going good out of Flash Fifty-Five on the, the structure, or the, hooking up the utilities out there and stuff, or have they started yet?
That'll start next week.
Can you go over what was decided with the utilities for the, uh... Can you go over what was decided with the utilities for the, uh, CIP project?
The underground?
The underground?
The electricity. Brent was wondering what, what was finally decided on electricity for the CIP project this year, is it all gonna go underground?
So, uh, we'll, we'll confirm that with the utility company, uh, next week at our pre-construction meeting on Tuesday. But the last we've settled yet, they are going to get those, get it underground, work around the two properties that we could not get these.
Two problems.
And they will rotate seasons. Phase one won't get the underground done till next year and then phase two will get the underground done this year. So that they're not tripping over each other in the process.
Alright.
So the, so the two easements they, they couldn't get were homeowners that didn't want it then, Jenna, just out of curiosity?
Um, there's, there's more like four of them right now. Um, we feel that once the project starts and they can talk to the electric company, um, a couple of them, at least two of them will probably sign them. But there's a possibility there might be four of them.
And the power company said they would work around that. It's not ideal, but they can work around it, they're not gonna let just that smaller number hold them up from doing.
Alright. Any other questions for Jenna while we got her here? Alright, thank you, Jenna.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you later. Library director, none tonight. We got a material in here, he left his report in here. Sounds like they've been quite busy with their curbside service and stuff and everything's going well over there. Fire chief report, you got anything from him, Bill?
Uh, nope, not this month, or this meeting.
Alright, that takes us to committee commission board reporters. Chamber commerce has got the big newsletter in here, they've got a lot of stuff going on that they're working on, trying to make things work out. Senior appreciation banquet, they're looking at possibilities later on for that and, uh, any of our businesses are open, like you say, stay here and come and do some shopping here. EDA, HRA?
Uh, meeting next week, correct?
Yep, finance?
Nothing.
Library?
Nothing.
Yeah. Park board?
Uh, we're meeting next week.
Personnel? Not at this time. Mya Zoni?
Uh, we met last week and two items were on our agenda tonight and I think we meet, we meet in June.
We'll meet in June? We got minutes from your meetings in our packet too, so thank you. Public safety? You get anything for us? Public works?
Nope.
Ready?
No report?
Roll call?
Uh, we're gonna meet tomorrow, virtually.
And you got minutes from way back in February twenty-sixth, isn't it?
Yeah, they've canceled them all up until now tomorrow.
Really?
And they hope to go back live next week for our regular monthly meeting, so we'll see, tomorrow's a special day.
Stu one eighty?
No, this time.
Not this time, transit advisory committee?
Yep, they've got their meeting scheduled for Thursday and that'll be done virtually, so me and Dan will be on that.
Alright, good. Nothing air communications? Takes us to our open mic, which, don't worry, anybody gets to use open mic again tonight, do they?
See, you don't have to read it.
Huh?
You don't have to read it, I'll text.
Well, make a motion to adjourn.
I think it's a final motion, do adjourn, we already got the motion.
I'll second.
We got a second, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order adjourned.